The app. So, we're going to be using a process called participatory design, which incorporates cooperative inquiry and that is including children in the design process. So, not only does it speak to what they want to know, it also will require them to ask their friends and their family how this app is working and then just keep iterating on that process. So, they have ownership of the design and the product. And it all ties in nicely with this Benjamin Franklin quote, which is, "Tell me and I forget, teach me and I may remember, involve me and I learn." So, this is the community so far, like we had already said our thanks to everyone here. And also, the Green Team is overseeing this project. We're also bringing in some more community members and the Native Plant Society. This is a quick timeline. We're establishing the garden now. We're gathering materials. Then, come January, we're going to design, test, and revise the app. And then, come to the end of the school year, finally, we will launch. We are reaching out for some grants and donations. Oops. So, we have applied for the HPEF grant for funding of the sensors. We also need a rain barrel over on the side, the little wooded area. That's where we plan to have the garden. Our Donors Choose site is going really well. The idea is to make the garden more accessible for teachers by giving them grade-level kits, where that has the tools, like magnifying glasses, binoculars, ID guides, so that you can just kind of one-stop, take it, interact with the garden, and then come back in. We also got a great donation of native plants from Bowman's Hill Wildflower Preserve. It's of plants, over $500 worth of plants. And we are going to plant them coming this weekend. We're partnering with Echo Schools, which, if you know, we already have at the school the Sustainable New Jersey Badge. Now, Echo Schools is a little bit more kid-friendly and complements that program. So, the kids will earn badges for the school as we go through, like, their biodiversity badge. We can move on to a recycling badge. It just keeps stemming off of that. Already, this past spring, for Environmental Education Week, Ms. Dolan got in, the Echo Schools program leader, and introduced the children to the program. And they got all excited about the cute little butterfly badges and stuff. Then, we did a biodiversity audit. And the children went outside and looked around at all the grounds and used critical thinking to figure out, are the grounds actually diverse? And like I had mentioned before, we are going to be doing the planting day, which everyone is welcome to come to this Sunday at noon. So, in summary, fall 2017, garden prep, materials and donations. Then, we're going to do the design process. And then, the spring plantings and launch the site. We already have our splash page up, which, thank you to Dr. Nikosia, is hosted right off of the STEM page and our Donors Choose site. And that's it. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Planting Day, Sunday. Correct? This Sunday? This Sunday is planting day, correct? Okay. Great. Thank you, Dr. Nikosia, for helping with the project. Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Please.
Did you guys have a question first?
I'm going to give you back the mic.
Oh, yeah. That'd be great. Well, first of all, thank you for this work. This is really exciting. I'm someone who has a child at Bartle, and I'm really looking forward to it. You mentioned there's an app and a physical garden. What is the app? Is there an app or is the garden itself sort of a physical app?
So, if we want to talk strictly coding, it will not be a native app coded in SWIFT or anything.
Okay.
But what we do plan on doing is, once the children design the interface, I am going to connect it to the sensors that are outside that will be measuring temperature, humidity, light conditions. And it will be a fully responsive site where, through media queries, I will make it so that the app, the phone experience, the mobile experience, I want it to be different than the desktop experience. So, families can go and visit the garden using their handhelds.
That's fantastic. That I didn't understand. So, you can go to the webpage, either on your computer or on the mobile, and see information about the garden as it's happening, perhaps?
Yes.
As it happened recently?
Yes. To make it that interactive, but also that data collection connecting. Because the environment and technology don't have to be two separate things.
That's fantastic. That sounds really exciting. And another question about, maybe this is more for Dr. Taylor. I'm a little unclear on how the GNT program is working at Bartle this year. Is this really just the GNT class that will be doing this? Or is this, I understood that Ms. Schaefer-Dolan was going to be working with the whole school. So, like, everybody was going to be doing the FUSE program. It was sort of GNT for everybody.
We haven't launched our GNT program yet at Bartle because we're revamping it so that we could focus on kids' individual strengths. I told the curriculum committee briefly that Ms. Dolan is creating an assessment that would allow kids to express their different interests. So, for instance, we're likely be identifying students who have a specialty in performance and then being able to give them enrichment outside of their regular class in that area. Kids who have an affinity for mathematics, those who are creative writers, as opposed to the traditional model, which has been, you take an aptitude test, we interview your teachers, you look at your grades. And if you score high academically, we'll pull you out and provide you additional enrichment. This new model is going to focus on individual strengths. And I promise I'm going to be sharing all the details with the curriculum committee in November. And then, Ms. Dolan has been invited to come speak at the second meeting in November.
That's great. Yeah, I think the board is probably going to be interested in hearing about the program before it's finalized. And that's been sort of historically a program of great interest to the board. Just as a sort of warning on that note. I also, I mean, I hope that will non-GNT students be working on the citizen garden? I have a student who is in GNT or was last year because he does score well on academic tests. And I've always felt that it wasn't fair that he got to do this, like, exciting, enriching stuff that wasn't available for the whole school. I mean, I'll just make a plug here, I know we're not having a discussion of it, for trying to find everybody's individual strengths and, you know, bringing everybody into the citizen garden because it sounds wonderful. And frankly, my son's friends that are not in the GNT program or were not in the old GNT program would love the enrichment that we're seeing here. I mean, I think this might bring some people back into engagement with school. As it's currently planned, will there be non-GNT students involved in the citizen garden? It's not just going to be a small group of variously talented children.
Sure. I'll speak to a little bit about that.
Thank you.
What Vicki was talking about was how the students in their science classes can go out and be part of the interactive garden and contribute to the data collection. So, we're trying to make these kits in a way so teachers can just grab the kit and go out there and collect the data. Citizen science is a really big field. There's a lot of great websites in which normal citizens can go and collect data and contribute to science. And so, that's what we are hoping that as we can develop the curriculum more, add these components, so any grade-level teacher can pick up the sort of basket of stuff, go out there and have the students interact with the garden, but also contribute to the data on the back end.
Oh, that's great. I didn't know that citizen science was a thing, a term of art. That's wonderful. So, there'll be a whole school involvement here.
Absolutely.
What is the special, like, limited-to-GNT involvement? What is that, part of the program? Is it building a website or?
Yes. So, the core design team, as it's set up now, will be one of the GNT cycles.
Okay.
However, we do want to plan, part of the design process is testing the app. So, we do want to involve all the grades and we want to invite even families to come in. And we were trying to think about how to create, like, a family testing day.
That'd be great.
Because that's an incredibly important part of the design process, to get that feedback. You note all the bugs.
Right.
And then, you take it into account for your next iteration. So, that's how we imagined to include more than just a core, small group in that particular process.
I see. That sounds wonderful. I mean, you have a whole school full of beta testers, right? I do think that if we're revamping the GNT program to focus on other areas like performance, there's no real rational reason to sort of say, you high-performing performers, you artistic, you know, you who excel in art, in vocal music, and whatever, you guys come and work on this app. And, you know, here's some student who's not in GNT but who likes science. It just seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect there. There's no reason to say, you're a great clarinet player, so you come over here and work on the app. You know, and this other person here who's not a great clarinet player and is not a GNT student, but really likes science and coding. I hope that we'll consider making the entire thing as accessible as possible to people who are interested in it, not just the GNT students, particularly if our GNT program is going to reach out to students who might not like coding. I mean, if this is going to be a more diverse GNT class, who's to say they're going to enjoy coding? You know? I know plenty of kids who enjoy coding and they're not necessarily going to be, they don't play clarinet or score highly on tests. Okay. I just want to put in a plug for that.
Other questions?
It sounds wonderful. I don't mean to be so challenging. More just about, I want to make sure that all the kids get a benefit from this. And it sounds like they will. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, then, thank you for being here. And you're welcome to stay through the student spotlight or you can leave. We won't be offended. I want to thank the Bartle staff who's here. I'm thinking that you might have been here to support our student spotlight or you're just here because you're here and you love Bartle. Either way. Or it was convenient we're here in your school, right? So, either way, Mr. Benjamin, you look beautiful. I love the suit. Come on up. You're all ready to go. Unfortunately, the student we want to spotlight couldn't be here tonight. But we want to talk about him publicly and then present it with a certificate. We did this once before. Mr. Benjamin and I took a picture in my office of a student.
Perhaps someone could give him the time on the video? Could send the parents, you know, it's on the video at 7:59, right? You know, one hour and whatever. I mean, really, that'd be great. So, the family can see the video.
Well, his teacher's here, so that's, you know.
Oh, that's all done.
Ms. Dobrovolsky's here.
That's all done. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to micromanage. Sorry about that.
So, Hassan, hi. How are you out there in HP Lane? Good evening, Dr. Taylor, members of the board and the community at large. Thanks for having these events, truly. And I love when they're here at Bartle because it gets to showcase all the great things that are happening here. It also gets to showcase the best of who we are as a learning community. Quick proverb, because, you know, I never can start anything without giving a wonderful, fabulous quote, if you will. A clear conscience is far more valuable than money. Unlike in business, here in education and even at home, we as educators and parents often don't get the chance to see the fruits of our labor or the product at the end of the day, month, or even the year. Countless hours toiling over lesson plans just to ensure a 20- to 40-minute lesson is executed to perfection, all to develop a child's capacity to learn perpetually. Kneeling down, smiling, conferencing, and off-airing words of encouragement five to 10 times a day to a child is what we hope will inspire that child to know and feel that they matter and can do more. Aristotle said, and I absolutely love this quote, "Pleasure in the job puts perfection in the work." Each day, we as educators and as parents put in the work with no guarantee or certainty that our efforts will render smarter, more curious, thoughtful, and caring children. But nonetheless, we engage this endless pursuit just hoping and expecting to see our best selves and our teachings in our children. Tonight, I'm pleased to honor an individual, and although he's not here, an individual student who has enabled both his teachers, administrators, and parents the opportunity to smile with joy and glee as we are able to see the fruits of our labor and teachings in this student. Our student tonight is being recognized for his honesty, integrity, and righteousness. Several weeks ago, he stumbled upon a wallet while walking to school. In this wallet, he discovered over $140. Now, imagine that. You're a fifth grader, you're 10 and 11 years old, and you stumbled upon $140. Go figure. When others might have said, hey, no one saw me pick up the wallet, dot, 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 this individual didn't think twice and immediately brought the wallet to the main office and gave it to Ms. Grassi so as to find the rightful owner. This student embodies a critical aspect of Bartle's vision of doing right by others. He is among an incredible student body who is committed to do right by others each and every day at Bartle. Please join me in celebrating and spotlighting Carol Dobrovolsky's fifth-grade student, Hassan Franklin. Hassan, thank you for being an upstanding citizen and making your mother, your teacher, your relatives, your principal, your superintendent, your Board of Education and community proud of your actions in doing the right thing. Hassan Franklin. Here to accept Hassan's award is his very wonderful teacher, Carol Dobrovolsky. Give him another round of applause. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for coming out, Mr. Benjamin, Ms. Dean, and everybody. I appreciate it. We'll make sure we get a picture tomorrow, certificate and all. So, that concludes my report. Those of you who were here for my report, you're welcome to head out. If you're here to stay for the rest of the agenda, stick around. I did invite the supervisors to be here through the curriculum portion of the agenda. And then, I'm going to ask them to head out as well because they have a long day ahead of them tomorrow. Have a good night. And Vicki, thank you for being here.
Thanks for being here, everyone. All right. Where are we?
All right. We're going to go on to the board committee's reports and recommendations. First up is curriculum. Michelle is not here, but I understand that she has passed the baton to you, Rob Vasilevich.
She did.
Excellent. Let's hear it.
Building on what we discussed last week, you know, again, we're.
Is your mic on, Rob? I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is your mic on?
It is on. I was too far away.
My ear is just.
Yep.
Got it.
No, it's a good reminder when we're here.
Thank you, sir.
So, building on what we discussed last week, on field trip requests, there was one additional field trip that is added to the list at no cost. We would be going back to one incident report from June. In terms of curriculum, we have a lot of curriculum that we, hopefully, a lot of us were able to look at. And there's a lot to look at there in terms of curriculum. Number five is a new item, which was university and graduate students who would be interns or doing, what's it called? They'd be observing, most of them.
Correct.
And number six and seven, and I think all the way through 10, were training and related to pulling some staff out for additional training, either related to Title I tutoring or handle with care training.
Now, I know I provided the board a lot of information to read regarding curriculum revision. I didn't expect everybody to read every single word. I did want the board to get a sense of the direction in which we now go with our curriculum documents. Thanks to the work of Ms. Ackley, Dr. Nikosia. They're here in case you have any questions whatsoever about curriculum that's on this agenda for resolution to be approved. If you don't, it's quite all right. I'm sure they had things they could, they did up until the board meeting. But I just wanted to make sure that they were available. Mr. Krieger?
Yeah, I had a, especially since I wasn't at the last meeting. I wanted to get a sense of how much was revision and how much was complete rewriting of these curriculum. I mean, there's boards of education that might be completely missing a curriculum in something, you know, it got lost or whatever. That's not the case here. We have curriculums for these areas. Were they completely revised from scratch? Were they rewritten from scratch? Or were they revised? And what sense could you give us on what was done in that way?
Sure. For the STEM curriculum that was written, we had a new one, Makerspace. So, that's a brand-new curriculum. To replace the technology at the middle school, sixth through eighth. So, that was a brand-new curriculum. All the other science that was revised was the revisions from when I picked up with my work last summer. Some revisions needed to be done based on best practices in creating performance task assessments and opportunities, learning opportunities to really meet the science and engineering practices within the curriculum. And then, fifth-grade mathematics was pretty much a brand-new curriculum. When I started in looking at the documents, they were pretty much about 109 to 120 pages of a program that the school adopted many years ago called Everyday Math. That is a program. It's not necessarily curriculum. So, we wanted to make sure we created withstanding curriculum regardless of programming so that we were meeting the New Jersey student learning standards and the needs of all students in the classroom. And then, that was a resource that we were able to pull from. If you read the document, you'll see examples of where Everyday Math was applicable, the learning opportunities that were in the program. So, that was a relatively new document as well.
What do you do, what do you do in cases that interest me a lot? AP Computer Science, AP Physics. How do you do that? I mean, is that taken from the textbook slash curriculum that we've adopted, that we're going to use? Is it taken based on who's going to teach it, working on it? How do you do something like that? Because that's a difficult problem, especially in Computer Science and Physics, both of them changing so much.
So, those are usually revised from what the AP board brings down. So, the teachers go to their AP summer courses. And then, from there, they get the learning opportunities, the standards, the assessments from the program, from the AP board. And then, we use that to create our curriculum.
Got it.
So, that's more driven by the AP Regulation Board rather than more locally.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Scott?
Just conferring really quickly. Excuse me. So, we have curriculum writers here. So, thank you again, Ms. Vatvinik, for writing curriculum and working on things throughout. So, I, your question for ELA looks a little different. So, we have a writer's workshop that's been in use and is part of the writing curriculum. But this is the first year that K through third grade has access to Reader's Workshop resources, which of course is Dr. Taylor's vision and the entire vision of the district to really do workshop model in K-5 classrooms. So, we had a total revise, total rewrite, and definitely from scratch for fourth and fifth grade because they designed lessons to have close reading involved, using noted forms of the information being portrayed so kids can access it from many different points. And there's options for teachers to use it in a small group or reteach. So, I would say that there's some revolutionary ideas even though it's a revision. So.
One of the things I hope you noticed when you looked at the curriculum guides is that they all include much more extensive modification charts than we've had in the past. And that is mostly a result of the strategic planning focus area, too, that has this differentiating instruction. So, that's one of the things I'm most proud of, the work that you did with the teachers. Any other questions?
Yeah. Could Dr. Nikosia review a little bit more about the Makerspace since that's a new program, if you don't mind, some highlights?
Oh, yes. It's one of my favorite topics. It's, so far, it's been going really, really well. We're actually able to score some money through a Title IV grant to outfit the program with little bits and makey-makey circuit kits. But the idea is students will be solving real-world problems, one for each grade level as they go through a quarter. So, for example, the students in seventh grade will be requiring to be, demonstrating that they're good digitally literate citizens. So, they have to educate others on how to be a good digitally literate citizen. So, the idea is they're learning about those 8.1 and 8.2 technology standards, but through a real-world scenario. And they have basically any platform, any means by which they want to solve the problem, communicate the problem. So, the traditional technology standards that were addressed previously are still in the curriculum, but in a more innovative way through a problem-based learning approach. So, they still have to articulate their solution. So, that could be through a Google presentation or a PowerPoint or through a Word document if they're writing a letter or making a video. So, they have an opportunity for a green screen and do video production. So, they have all these opportunities in how they want to solve their problems. In addition, the course starts out, every day starts off with a quick-fire challenge. So, students get to pick their quick-fire challenge. So, they do the solo cup challenges. They have to engineer a holder to bring a ball down a six-foot slant at the best time and stuff like that. So, they're doing these sort of engineering and kind of design challenges as a way to get their brains thinking, working collaboratively and thinking, like in the STEM world, to be able to then engage in their Makerspace curriculum.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you.
Could I ask, and I don't know, this isn't necessarily on one side or the other, but if we were to go into a classroom or a grade and just have a sense of, from one section to the next, to the next, how much difference would we see from classroom A, B, or C in terms of the strengths that each individual teacher may be able to provide as opposed to kind of the same exact curriculum, one room to the next, to the next? Do you know what I mean? Is that a?
That's a great question. And I have an answer because you're looking like you do. And exactly, if you want to chime in, you're welcome to, but you don't have to.
So, curriculum was revised and created in a way so that a teacher could, when they were doing their lesson plans, sort of use data to inform their instruction. So, like Ms. Ackley was saying, there's a lot of opportunities for differentiated instruction within the curriculum. So, the hope is that students, the teachers realize, okay, here's my group of students that I have as learners. And then, I'm going to go to the curriculum and pull out what I need to in order to meet their needs. So, if I, students that need enrichment in a certain topic, I can go to the curriculum document and find those activities, those learning opportunities to meet those students' needs. Same thing if they have some struggling learners in their classroom. How can they go and find the learning opportunities that'll meet those students' needs? So, that's one thing that we're really most proud about with the curriculum that we're presenting to you for approval, is that although it may look slightly different in every classroom, it's still pulling from the same set of resources. So, what you should see if you go into a classroom is truly differentiated instruction. So, it's not a program in which all teachers at 8:53 are doing one particular thing. It's that they're doing what's best for their students culminating from that. And we'd like to say the curriculum is a living document because even just last week or a couple of weeks ago, the fifth-grade teachers went for more conquer math training and they opened up their Google Doc and they started typing in another color, some more strategies to meet the needs of learners within that document. So, it's a living document that we're still adding more resources to to help meet the needs of all the learners. Do you want to add anything?
The one thing I would add for ELA, like I said, thanks to your support and all of your help, we were able to add resources. So, the curriculum unifies the objectives within the Reader's Workshop and within the Writer's Workshop. So, everyone across fifth grade needs to know how to start looking closely at nonfiction text and answering, asking tough questions and analyzing author's bias. But then, the resources I use for my English language learners and for my inclusive students with IEPs, those are all available through the text sets. And the teachers make those decisions, decisions and choices as to implementation. So, you're going to have variances in what it looks like within the classroom, but yet the same objectives, if that helps. And the same, for reading, the strategies, the core of what each child will do at the end of that grade level stays the same because of what's happening in the Reader's Workshop, if that makes sense. So, they're growing each year. And like I said, there's a great progression and now consistency that way.
One other very quick question. Are we still teaching To Kill a Mockingbird?
He's referring to the latest news story on a censorship of To Kill a Mockingbird, right?
Are we?
I think in Mississippi, we are, aren't we? Is it one of our texts?
10th grade.
Microphone?
It was 10th grade. We read in 10th grade.
I know my ninth graders just finished reading Catcher in the Rye.
They just finished Catcher in the Rye and they have The Color Purple coming up. So, they have awesome things coming their way. And also, the Joy Luck Club happens in ninth grade. They'll be reading that soon. So, like I said, culturally responsive text.
School community took offense to the use of an expletive to refer to African-Americans in To Kill a Mockingbird. So, they censored the book, which is what I think Mr. Maggson is referring to. Any other questions?
Yeah. I'm still curious about the text sets and how rigid those text sets are within the classroom.
I'm going to bring Ms. Ackley back. Here, I'm going to give you the mic.
I don't know if an exemplar was already given to you as a Google Doc link, but I'll do that. So, I think you should be able, within the curriculum document, be able to open each hyperlink. But for example, I set the goal of having for the high school teachers and for middle school teachers as well as having text sets in at least two out of the four units. Mr. McCray did a brilliant job with the curriculum writing. He has a text set for every unit he's teaching, which is outstanding. So, it's not rigid, it is a living document just as it is for math and science. So, as they're finding more resources, they're continually adding to it as well. But it's really up to the students in their classroom to determine how they're using the materials. For example, News ELA is an excellent resource and you change the Lexile level, so the readability for kids can vary from helping a student with an IEP to challenging a student who's part of like enrichment and gifted and talented. So, I have, you know, multiple resources available just even from that one website, which is awesome. So, and it's also available in Spanish and other languages. So, those are great things.
So, when it lists Romeo and Juliet within the ELA for, I think that's 7th grade, it doesn't necessarily mean that every student would be reading Romeo and Juliet, they might be reading a variation on it?
There are two different versions of that one available from our current collection. And also, there's supplemental support for Romeo and Juliet that the teacher has. Yeah. Great question. Great question.
Thank you, Ms. Zachly. Did you have a question, Ms. Scott?
I have a sort of a silly technical question. Do we have, is this really the AP Physics curriculum that we have? It says, when you open it up, it says Applied Physics, grades 9 through 12. I just wonder if maybe the board has the wrong document. This is not really a question for you. It looks like we might have the wrong document. But that's not for you, that's for Dr. Taylor. So, okay. I'm not sure, it's different from the other physics curriculum, but it doesn't really look like AP, so.
I could hover over your shoulder and I could sit down and we could take a look together.
I mean, it's, you know, I'm sure there's a wonderful AP Physics curriculum, I just haven't had a chance to look at it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more, Scott.
Please.
Can someone please describe exactly again what is service-based learning and how that applies, where that is?
I can in a nutshell, but if you want. It's an extension of Be the Change program in 6th grade, it's elective, but Ms. Zachly?
Yes, so Nikki Ferengue is currently teaching that class and they're doing awesome research about what the community needs are and how students could actively be part of helping a community concern. It's also linked to Rutgers. So, students, the goal is that after the students do the research in the classroom through until about April, that they'll go to Rutgers and present their projects and presentation and the work that they've done. So, it's really, it's a beginning action research. It's really awesome. But it continues the efforts of Be the Change, if that makes sense, yes.
Thank you.
It's part of our effort to expand elective options at the middle school, which we never had before, before last year.
It looks really exciting. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
If Be the Change had been on the first page, I probably would have been right there and understood exactly what it was about, but when it, reading it in service-based learning, it all seemed to make sense, but just putting it in the framework of Be the Change, it makes a lot more sense to me now.
It looks great. It looks like a much more intensive version of Be the Change where you actually learn how to, you learn in more detail how to ask interview questions, how to write letters, how to identify people that you want to talk to. It looks fantastic, in my inexpert opinion.
If there are no other questions or comments, I am going to send Dr. Zachly, I've just given you a doctorate, Dr. Nikosia and Ms. Zachly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question.
One of our student reps.
It's about the personal health and fitness, or the personal fitness class, so I don't know if either of you actually, it's like particularly an expertise area or whatever. But because students aren't actually coming in for that class, or as my understanding, many students in that class aren't coming in, how does the curriculum affect it?
It's an elective for the first-period students who come.
Right, okay.
So, it's only offered to those students who elect to come first period.
So, okay, so all the students have been exempt from it who are technically enrolled? Like, there's, okay, my understanding is that there's three sport athletes who are enrolled in personal fitness and don't, is that a different class?
Okay, so, I'll, well, I think I can answer your question by explaining what's going on with that in general. So, students who are involved in an organized sport or could be dancers or do something that's physical fitness-related can be exempt from PE in general, not just that course but PE as well, as long as they qualify by going through a process we call Option 2. So, later in the agenda, you'll see that we're approving, recommending the approval of some teachers, I think Ms. Schimone in particular, to supervise Option 2. So, this first period is, really doesn't have anything to do with the exempted students, it's just an additional elective for kids who love personal wellness.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm confused because in just in terms of like the vernacular at the high school, we refer to the people who are three sport athletes as kind of being in this, but they're actually Option 2, is that, that's right?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question. Okay, have a good night supervisors, thanks for being here. And I think that's it, well, for curriculum at least.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We will now move on to finance and facilities. Mark, are you ready for us? And for people watching, of course, this is our voting meeting, so we have discussed all of, most of this stuff last week. I was not present, but I assume we discussed.
I actually wasn't present either, which you don't know, I guess.
Because I wasn't present.
And Rob, you worked, went through these. So, there are a few new ones. Numbers 12, 13, 14, and 15. Treasurers Report, Board Secretaries Report, Board of Ed Certifications, and Approval of Budget Transfers are all new. There's two new people being approved as contractors in number 16. And I think that is all. But there's nothing, Rob, do you have anything to add? There's nothing very unusual in these.
No, there were some items that we were discussing in our finance meeting that were related to some changes necessitating additional staffing, that kind of thing. But in terms of, you know, what we're seeing on this week's agenda, it's really stuff that we discussed last week.
Okay, so we'll be hearing about the...
Are these the new backboards that you were talking about, that were donated? Are they new?
They look new.
Yep, there they are.
Beautiful.
Pretty nice.
So, I expect we'll be hearing about these staffing changes?
I do have a question about the motion. So, on the finance, I am the recipient of the travel approval in number 9. Should I not be moving that, Linda?
You can move it, but you need to abstain, each board member who is mentioned on a motion
Right.
needs to abstain from that particular item.
Right, so I need to abstain on 9, and Rob needs to...
We need to abstain on 11.
When we do it.
Yes, when you provide your vote that you abstain on those items.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions for the Finance Committee? And are there any additional curriculum questions? I neglected to ask that general question. Okay, we will move on to, which one have we not done? Ah, Personnel, is that next? Yes, Personnel and Communications, Judy?
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to read in the new things on the agenda from last week and a couple of corrections on the agenda. So, number 8, we have the resignation of the Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Suzanne Zachly. That will be making her last day in the district, November 27th. And I would like to, on behalf of the Board, thank her for her work on behalf of the curriculum. As you can see from her presentation tonight, she did a lot of good work, so thank her for that. And then, we have number 11 on the Schedule B positions, we have an add-in for wrestling, Evan Roger Farmer. We have a little bit of a change in number 17, Approval of Disability Leave of Absence. The estimated date of return for this employee is November 4th, which was formerly October 6th. Number 23, we have some additional academic coaches. That would be Mr. Broadfoot and Mr. McCray in the high school. And I think also an add-in is under number 24, the Approval of the High School Title I Academic Coach, Nicole Krupski. And, oh, we have a correction, I think, on number 30. No, I think it says... Is on there. Oh, okay. Yes, okay, so the payment is incorrect. So, it should be, for Venice Road, the hourly rate should be $22.21, not $17.29. Thank you, Ann. On 32, we have the Approval of Middle School Title I After-School Teachers listed, Cheryl Gloff, Christine Sikora, Rebecca Unans, has a new name, which is Ally, so Rebecca Ally, Sarah Kozlowski, Mark Lobianco, Joyce Puccio, and Margaret Kloslo. Number 33 are also the Approval of More Middle School Title I Homework Teachers. Number 34 is the Approval of High School Title I Tutoring Teachers. Number 35 is the Approval of Mr. Esteban as a Title I Translator as needed. 36 is the Approval of Medical Leave Coverage at Irving School. Let's see, let's see, oh, for my, that's listed. And then we have some volunteers for the Drama Department at the high school listed, four volunteers. Thank you to them. And then number 38, we have a request to approve an administrative leave for a teacher, employer, employee, rather. And that's it.
Okay, wonderful. Move on to policies and regulations. I'll start with number 2, actually. We went over this last week, or you probably went over this last week. Number 2, we've been over a couple times, it's the Special Education Receiving Schools policy, which is mandated, and it's, the essence of it is mandated, and, you know, I don't think, I think all of us are comfortable with what it says, mostly tracks the statute. Policies for First Reading, these are the ones that we went over at at least one workshop meeting. I think I'm going to ask that we table number 1, Subparagraph I, 8550, Outstanding Food Service Charges.
Well, I was going to ask you if you'd rather, just since we have to have a second reading, keep it and then review the change into the next board meeting?
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, actually, you know what, I have how it is on my drive, on the publicly-available copy, is it the version that the committee approved or is it the version with Linda's question?
The version is, the version that you would approve for first read does not include the change.
Okay, so we'll consider that as time goes on.
For the second reading.
Yes, right, okay. All right, so that we know tabling, I'm going to recommend that we approve all of those for first reading. With 8550, Linda apprised Scott of a state statute that says once, you give that, you know, someone is in arrears on their, on their school lunch, the parents are given one notice and then they're given 10 days, I don't remember the specifics. And then after the 10 days, they get a second notice, and then I don't remember again the number of days, but it's something like 14 days, eight days. After that, the student is not given lunch if the parent has not paid. So, the state statute, which I also looked up, it does say, you know, after that time period, you know, no lunch shall be provided. So, I wanted to, whereas we had changed the policy to not bar the student from receiving lunch, we were hopeful that the Board and the administration and the parents could work that out without an impact on the child. So, we're going to need to revisit that and see if we can, I know, I know, and see if we can do anything to protect the student without running afoul of state law.
Right.
For now, I'm recommending it with, in the form the committee approved, which does not have the no lunch provision.
But the suggestions that came to us had checkbox choices.
Yes.
And one of those checkbox choices, I thought, was to allow us to continue to give lunch to the child. Was that in contravention with state law?
There was a part of it, that we checked off the more liberal, more student-protective version.
Right.
But even that version said that after the 8 plus 14 days
Oh, I see.
or 10 plus 13 days, whatever it is, no lunch. And that tracks the language of the statute. Now, it's possible that that statute does not bar us from providing more protection, but I'm a little confused about how to resolve that. So, I'm asking us just to pass it as it appears in the public documents for first reading and then we'll try to work that out.
And we could ask our attorney.
Yes, we could ask our attorney, yes, that is a good idea. That would be the way to go.
We should.
In fact, that would be the way to resolve this.
If we're allowed to be more liberal than the state, than the statute.
And hand out sandwiches, right.
I mean, we have our normal legal remedies against the parents if we decide to pursue them, don't involve withholding lunch from a student.
I think it's reasonable to go with Scott's recommendation to at least approve it on first reading.
Yes.
While we consider the significance of that, those few items. Because overall, I thought it was, it was in line with what we were steering towards, but, you know, I think we just need to clear up just a few issues.
And I appreciate, Linda, you surprising us of that. But we can't just make whatever changes we want necessarily in the statute.
What I pointed out to Dr. Taylor was that as it stands right now, it's a bit of a contradiction because it says in the policy that, you know, you would adhere to the law, referencing the statute, but the statute is contradictory of the policy writing as it stands right now. So, that is the problem.
Correct. We don't always know what language tracks the statute and what language is put in there by stress estimate, so Linda advised us of that. So, we're going to take a look at that. I imagine we may wind up, you know, just putting that language back in, but we'll, you know, maybe we can ask Jonathan, ask our attorney, see what we can do, something. So, I mean, I really don't, my personal view, anybody who cares to hear it, is that, you know, if we want to pursue the parent, you know, for an illegal action or whatever, go ahead. The lunch is not very expensive and it's a kid and, you know, there's clearly something going wrong in that home if they really cannot get their act together to pay that lunch money. Okay, so, let's see, that's policy. Equity and Excellence, Sharice went home in the middle of executive session, she was sick, so she hasn't assigned this to anybody else. Scott, do you know if there's been a committee meeting?
There has not.
There was not.
There has not, oh, you guys, I'm sorry. Forgot who was on the committee. All right, so, I guess, oh, public comment. Let's see, I have to find a little script so I don't say anything wrong.
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah, no, I'm just looking for it. Sorry.
Page 3?
Page 3, one, wait, page 3?
Page 3.
I definitely know that the Board has reserved this time for your comments.
Oh, here it is. Page 2.
Oh, number 12, I see, sorry. Ah, how about that? The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. So, if anybody would like to come up to the podium, write their name and address or name and affiliation, that would be great. Come on, guys, nothing, nothing. Okay, nothing at this time. There will be another public comment session later in the meeting, should anyone want to revisit that. All right, so I think it comes time, it's time to vote. And we will start with curriculum. Rob Orslewicz, would you like to move the curriculum items plus whatever edits, if any?
I would like to move items 1 through 10 with one change on item number 8. It reads Rebecca Unans, and that should be Rebecca Ale. Under item 8, but I'd be moving items 1 through 10.
What was the change under 8? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you, the echoey.
She has had a name changed.
The last name, got it, got it, got it, got it. I want to make a comment about the curriculum. I mean, the AP Physics curriculum, I don't understand, but is it, do I vote yes on it because I trust our teachers? How, when we vote on this, what does that mean? That we have read every line of it and we agree with it? Anybody have any insights on that?
I didn't, I didn't, when I was looking at these, I didn't realize that we had an AP Computer Science or an AP Physics.
It's brand-new, the AP Computer Science.
Okay, so I didn't realize we had them and then during the meeting... Is that what, okay, so I didn't realize we had them, and then during the meeting, I noticed them, and then, and when you were commenting on it, I was actually reading it, the AP Physics.
Well, the committee has gone through all of them.
Oh, the committee has gone through, okay.
Michelle and Rob.
Okay.
They seem, they seem to be pretty reasonable courses, I would say.
As do our teachers, yes.
Just for, you know, just anecdotally for those.
The existence of the courses, definitely.
No, I mean, the curriculum, the curriculum that the course will follow seems to be very consistent with a college-level class, at least.
I didn't, I didn't understand the AP Physics curriculum. It seemed like it might have been another document, but you know what? You know what? I am just going to trust our committee.
And the committee.
And our teachers, and our administrators.
No, I'm assuming the committee.
Okay, so we have a motion from Rob. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wonderful. Linda, may we have a roll call, please? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
So, I am abstaining from two, and I'm voting yes for the rest of them.
Ms. Gowen?
I'm abstaining from two because I missed the last meeting at which more information was provided, and yes on the others.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Moving on to finance and facilities, Mark, would you like to move the finance?
Yeah, I'd like to move numbers one through 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, may we, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes on one through eight, yes on 10 through 24, and abstain on nine.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes on everything but 11, abstain from number 11.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Okay, personnel and communication?
I would like to move items one through 38 with the changes that I read in.
May I have a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes for everything but number 14, and I'll abstain from 14.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Okay, policy and regulations. I'd like to move that we pass the listed policies in number one for first reading, and the policy listed in number two for second reading. You have a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
No on one H, yes on the remainder.
Okay, we have no equity items. Now, usually we move on to our board liaison reports. Did you guys cover this last week? Did you go through the liaisons?
It was not on the agenda last week.
We did not.
It was not on the agenda last week, okay, I should know that, obviously. All right, Municipal Drug and Alcohol Alliance, does Mr. Joshua Chen give you a report of what happened, if there's a meeting?
For the municipal alliance?
Yeah, the drug and alcohol.
No, that doesn't happen until November 14th.
Got it.
The last meeting was September.
Okay. Public information is Michelle, who was not able to be here. Same with Highland Park Television. Mr. Magaziner, Highland Park Educational Foundation, any report?
Well, I attended the meeting. It was mostly a reorganization meeting. There are a couple of additional members, which is good to see, but nothing too, I shouldn't say too significant, but nothing of public interest to report. I will say to the board, my notes show that the next meeting, the October meeting, is the 14, is, is the 24th, and so I'm not going to be available. So if anyone would like to attend in my stead, that, that is available. That, that meeting is in the superintendent's office.
Would you mind sending out an email to remind those of us who are not present?
I shall.
And those of us who might not take notes accurately. All right. Commission for Universal Access, was there anything, Judy?
I was not able to attend, but I reached out to the chair of the committee, and she wanted to say, hold on, that the commission is very happy to, about how much help Ms. Boudin and Dr. Taylor have been helping make CPAC stronger. And when I asked her what you had been doing, she said that you were helping provide childcare and line up speakers, and agreed to let CPAC give an award at the end of the year to a teacher and para, and you were giving professional development to teachers and paras that attend workshops, so they can get to have more. So she wanted to give a shout-out to the administration.
Wonderful. Do we have a report on the public library meeting from Ms. Ackley?
That meeting is Monday night, a week from today.
Actually, can I do a little library shout-out?
Oh, yes, we had a library mention from Judy.
Yes, so I think at her last meeting, Suzanne went, there was a reference to something that's coming up on the November 7th ballot. It's called the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act, and as an administrator at a library, I can't tell anyone how to vote, but I wanted to provide everybody with just a little bit of information. And basically, what this, if it passes, the bond act would provide, the state would provide monies for construction and renovation projects throughout the state of New Jersey, and it's a one-on-one match of state and local dollars. So if, say, the Highland Park Library, or the Highland Park Town wanted to have the library do a project, they could apply for matching funds. So that's coming up on the ballot, so I'm just going to give an information sheet to everybody, so we have a group of informed voters here.
So if the town wanted assistance in paying for the leaky roof at our library, then perhaps this ballot measure might help them by getting extra funds from the state.
Correct, yes.
So if anybody is thinking about whether to vote yes.
We haven't had anything like this on the agenda, on the, on the ballot for a long time. You might remember a few years back when they did the same thing for state universities, and there was a lot more construction with that. So it's the same idea, but this is actually a one-to-one match, so.
As an always underfunded public school system, I know, I'm not sure that Judy is allowed to advocate for particular positions, since she's a professional librarian, but certainly as a, as a perpetually underfunded school system, we encourage people to vote yes on this, because we need all the outside-the-school resources that we can get.
Yeah.
To support our teachers, particularly our ELL.
Strong community, helps the schools.
Strong libraries for community, all those things.
Yes.
Okay, let's see, shared services, that's Darcy. Do you also deal with shared services? Do you also go to the shared services meetings? Or is that?
No, that, that committee has not gotten off the ground.
I didn't think so, okay. Ruth, CPAC?
So, just to piggyback what Judy was saying, the first CPAC official formal meeting of the year is tomorrow night at Highland Park Middle School, and it's a workshop, Strategies for Reducing Challenging Behavior. So they have a speaker coming in, and there is babysitting, but at this point, it is too late to sign up for that. Hopefully, people who needed it signed up last night by 6 o'clock, but that is tomorrow at 7:00, so I am planning on it, ongoing, so.
That sounds great.
I'd like to go, too. I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but since I'm the acting president, I'm going to just make time for it. But yeah, I would encourage the administration to really consider changing or altering the method of getting notices out to people. I mean, I don't remember getting a CPAC notice. I imagine it might have been one of 10 PDFs that I received in an email, and then either said I would open later, or tried to open, and then my phone crashed. I would really like to see us move toward a system where we at least have in plain text the basic information. CPAC meeting Tuesday night, 6 o'clock, must apply for daycare by, childcare by whatever date. Because I know from speaking with the parents in my circle, that PDFs are hard to open on slow phones, it's maybe different on an iPhone, but if you have a cheap Android phone, it takes a long time. If you don't have a PC at home, you're relying on that, you know, blah, blah, blah.
I agree, even though I have a souped-up iPhone.
I know, I know.
I still can recognize the problem. So I'm going to have the administrators, when I meet with them tomorrow, look to do that. The only exception would be if there's a PDF that is graphic-intensive, that we can't copy into a text, but if it's just simply text, we can do, definitely.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't do the graphic ones, but if there's a basic message in the graphic ones, like CPAC meeting 7 o'clock Friday, then that could be, you know, see PDF for many additional details even. I think that would be really helpful. I mean, I just know people aren't reading them, and when I give my report, which I actually will now, jump ahead, if that would be, I think it would be a jump ahead. Are you not finished? Are you finished with the CPAC?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I mean, so actually, I can go ahead and give my report on human relations, and one thing human relations was disappointed about was that the Human Relations Commission was the attendance at the September 11th day of discussion, which of course is not run by the school, but I would guess that the school possibly tried to help and sent out a notice or two. I know I didn't receive one from the school. My guess is possibly it was a PDF saying, please read all these PDFs, and then I didn't, I got busy and didn't go back to it. So I, you know, I'm glad that the school is considering that. I certainly don't mean like, let's get rid of PDFs, but if we could just get a little nugget of information there in the email itself. Okay, so actually, I think I'm not skipping ahead because Sharice is not here, yeah, then human relations. That was the main school-relevant thing at the last Human Relations Commission meeting, their planning for Martin Luther King Day, which, will that be, wait a minute, what month is it? I forgot what month we are in now. Will we be hosting the Martin Luther King Day celebration as we usually do?
Can you repeat that?
I'm sorry, yeah. The Martin Luther King Day celebration, will that be in the high school as it frequently is?
Yes, yes.
The town, okay, great. So watch for announcements on that. Let's see, next is Board of Health.
Board of Health meeting is this Thursday.
Wonderful. Green Team, Mr. Ruslovich, has there been a meeting?
On the Green Team, I don't have any update at this time.
Wonderful. Darcy not here, how about your position as delegate to the Middlesex County School Boards, Mr. Ruslovich?
The next session is November 1st. It's at Pierre's in South Brunswick. It's related to school finance. I went to last year's session, so if someone else is interested in going to it, but otherwise, I might just go to it, see if I don't glean a little bit more information from it this time that I might have missed after going through the whole negotiation session and having three years in as a school board member.
I can't believe they're having it at Pierre's. It's supposed to be a delegate, a school board meeting, or is it just sort of a professional development for school board members?
It's a professional development for school board members. So there's a little bit of time to, like, talk to other school board members from different districts and kind of get a sense of where they come from and what their biggest hurdles are, you know, and have informal sort of discussion with them, and then the floor is turned over to someone who's an expert in the field, and they'll discuss the particular topic for that evening. And this next one is school finance.
Wonderful, okay. I actually don't know anything about Middlesex County School Boards, could I ask as a matter of sort of academic interest, the risk of boring people? The Middlesex County School Board is elected members or appointed members? We don't elect them, do we?
I, I forget how it's structured.
I've never seen them on the ballot, I don't think. So do they, are there meetings at which you have a vote, as there are with the NJSPA Delegate Assembly? Which is a private organization, I realize.
Right, this is usually when I turn it over to Darcy.
Yeah, well, I remember Darcy.
We'll check back in.
Yeah. We will stop interrogating Rob on the other side of the channel.
I have no idea, Rob, so obviously, I don't expect anyone else to know either. All right, the president's report, the president is not here. Old Business Board Goals. So it's only 8:53. You know, I wonder if we should, how would you guys feel if I moved that we move the board goals to the very end of the meeting? How would people feel about that? We see, we get to it if we have enough time after other items? Would that be okay if we, rather than start on a potentially lengthy discussion right this second?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Is it, can we move the board goals to the very end of the, I guess we want to have public comment on the goals, huh? All right, well, let me just go, let me go ahead to Old Business, letter B, approval of submission of the CUSAC report. Did you guys go over the CUSAC report at the last meeting?
I did.
Okay, so everybody's.
It was in the board drive, so you had a chance to see it.
Okay, so in other words, we don't need to have a presentation on it because we had one already, when I was not here.
I do have another old business item, which I didn't list.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Because it's just data that happened to come to me recently. The latest reregistration information.
Ah.
I'm very pleased to report that we've gotten our numbers down to a very manageable amount. As of Friday, we only have 11 families yet to re-register at Bartle, 32 at the middle school, that's down from 44, 12 at the high school, and four students who live out of, I'm sorry, live here in the community, but we sent to out-of-district schools. So if you total that up, we're talking 16, oh, about 59 students, families left. We'll be sending certified letters home to those families to follow up, make sure that we get the reregistration documentation. This does, though, transition to a new business item I wanted to bring up, and I didn't put on the agenda. Can I do that now, or are we done with old business?
Should we go ahead and move, do we need to have, we need to have a motion on the CUSAC report, is that correct?
Correct.
Why don't we go ahead and move that? I'd like to move that we adopt, that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent to affirm the accuracy of the CUSAC report, and affirm that we're going to, affirm, and affirm, I guess we're going to vote to approve the CUSAC report and to direct Scott to submit it to the appropriate organization. So I move that that happens. May I have a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we go into old business, reregistration, and then after that, we'll discuss discussing the board goals. Take it away, Scott.
Okay. It came to our director of Special Services attention that one of our families, the child who we do send out of district, may not be residing in Highland Park. We've been investigating the matter for over a month, and we had to defer it to our board attorney, because it's a delicate situation. Our board attorney is recommending that we hire a private investigator to help research the matter of residency. He's only looking at this one particular case. I happen to have two other questionable residency cases that I had been thoroughly investigating for at least a month, that I would have, I would also recommend we have a private investigator research. This is a common practice. I know in my last district, it was common in Union County, we hired a private investigator. That individual assessed a fee of something like $80 a case. It does involve taking photos of the home in question, that we, that is a supposed residence in Highland Park. In the case of Kettleworth, it actually amounted to finding a family that was truly not residing in, in the community. The parent appealed to the board, lost the appeal, went to the commissioner, lost the appeal, family ended up moving to Florida. I did research the districts in our county to see what they're doing. Of all but two, use private investigators, Sayerville, but touch and don't use private PIs. I did ask why. I recognize this is a sensitive issue, could be delicate for some on the board who have concerns about sending a private investigator out into the streets. However, because we are, because this is being recommended by our board attorney, our counsel, and this is a situation that could potentially cost the district, if we do not follow up thoroughly, at least $100,000 on average on ballparking the transportation and tuition costs per year. The child is very young, so we could be looking at a 15 to 18-year outlay of this annual tuition and transportation assessment. So I wanted to have an open discussion about the board's feelings regarding the use of a private investigator. Ultimately, I have to make a recommendation to the board to hire somebody, and of course, to pay for his or her services. So I do need board approval before I move forward.
Personally, I don't see it as a sensitive issue at all, as long as we have gone through every step that we need to go through. So that, whatever that protocol normally would be, whether it be phone calls, emails, registered mail, I know we talked about that, which to me is a small cost in comparison to the overall. So to me, once you go through all of that, go through the procedures that we normally do, and then still have these questions, at that point, to me, it's not a sensitive issue at all, and I would approve for it of it.
So by way of example, in this case, the following steps were taken. First, we did send a letter home, didn't receive, actually, the letter came right back to us, which is what piqued our curiosity.
What, what did it say on the letter? Did it say no forwarding address available?
We asked that you provide documentation.
No, I'm sorry, what did the, what did the post office stamp on it? Out of curiosity.
It was a return, that's a good question, actually. I don't know. I know it came back to us.
Okay.
Find out. Then we sent another letter, certified return receipt. That came back to us. Finally, we called the individual, the family in this case. They made claim that in fact that address is where they're residing, requested that we send another letter, which we did. This was over a month ago, 30 days from the last Friday, so I'm sorry, last Thursday was the 30th day. Prior to that, we sent a third communication to the home, requesting documentation, telling the family they had 30 days to provide documentation. When we didn't get it, on the day after the 30th day, our council drafted a letter, which was a little firmer, again, a sent it, returned receipt, certified. We did not get it, we, it was acknowledged, received, and at this point, we still have not received any documentation. And I can't divulge, I prefer not divulge details, but I have other information that leads me and Ms. Budai to believe that in fact, this family does not reside in Highland Park.
It's a, it's a, a good comment on the, on the state of our education in Highland Park, that people want to send their children here badly enough to, perhaps, to be sending them from other districts.
Well, this student is going out of district.
Yes, this is an out-of-district student.
Well, no, I know, but they're living, they're living somewhere else in the state, but they feel as though perhaps that it's, we do such a good job of placing the child in the right, in the right.
Oh, perhaps that's right.
In the right school, which the district that they reside in isn't going to do, that they're very happy to use our taxpayers' money.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's the.
This is the second one I want to say, which is a little, I agree with Rob completely, but a little more strongly, that they're stealing from us.
Right.
They're stealing from us, they're taking everyone's tax money. It's not right.
Allegedly.
Allegedly. If they're doing, anyone who does this, and furthermore, Scott passed over an article to me, which wasn't special, it was just a family in another district, it was in NJ.com in another district, who sent some of their kids to the school they used to live in, the district, because they liked the district so much, not ours, you know, a different district. And when they lost, the administrative law judge ordered them to pay $39,000 in fees to that school district. They are taking our money. It's not, if they're doing such a thing, it's not right, and we should do whatever it takes, you know, within reason, within common practice, to determine where they really live and have them send their children to the appropriate school district. So I'm all in favor of your suggestion, and our attorney's suggestion.
I mean, our attorney doesn't, is, I have no doubt that it's perfectly legal to do this. You know, I, our attorney gave us wise counsel in that regard. I mean, this is something that I feel a bit uncomfortable with. It's hard to sort of verbalize exactly why. I think if they, if we're wrong, having a PI outside their house snapping photos, you know, it's a pretty unwelcoming thing to do, if we're wrong, and perhaps there's no chance we are.
But Anne, if we're wrong, it would only be because we have not gotten the response from the family that we have sought, and which every other family has given us.
I know, I know.
And I'm not suggesting we look at every family that didn't re-register and sent a private investigator. I'm only talking about the very most, the most egregious of cases in which I, recognizing the board's concern, the issue of privacy and whatnot, have compelled me to just expend the money, invest the money in looking into doing this.
Did this come up as a result of re-registration? In other words, did this information, did this, the motivation for sending out the PI, is this simply because this family did not re-register and is, I mean, did re-registration help us learn this information, in other words?
The answer to your first question is no, this is not a direct result of the re-registration process at all.
Okay, I just wanted to see how much re-registration has.
No, I have three cases that I'm looking at. The one that the council advised us to hire a private investigator for is, to me, almost like a slam dunk.
Almost a what? A slam dunk.
Yeah, I mean, to the extent at which the attorney is advising us to go this next route. The other cases, one involves somebody who was homeless, but now we believe is, has acquired permanent residency in another community. And the third case, I'm sorry, just those two cases.
Okay.
Right now.
Moving first to the homeless case, I mean, we have a homeless liaison, that's DeeDee Deacher, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And I assume, I mean, I don't want to micromanage a district, you know, that's your job. However, as a board, we need to be concerned with the possible public reaction to, you know, I imagine we'll wind up doing this, but I just want to make sure we've like, really, you know, wrung it through the wringer or whatever.
Absolutely.
Has our homeless, I mean, sometimes when you have a homeless family, there are serious problems in that family. They have issues about communicating, I mean, my clients, many of them are homeless, they're not good about returning phone calls or sending in certified letters. Have we had, for example, someone in our district go out to the new resident?
Actually, DeeDee Deacher goes out.
I see.
She pays home visits. We had a situation in which she did that in New Brunswick. We, there was a family living in a shelter in New Brunswick, but it happens to be a shelter that also offers permanent residency. And so she had to go as far as not only visiting the shelter, but inquiring about the status of this particular family's placement in the shelter.
Is this the family you're talking about?
She has a very rigorous paper trail.
Is this the family you're talking about, or is this a different case?
No, this is actually.
Other case.
A separate issue, but one of which I, actually, one in which we were able to resolve without having to go through a lot of hoops.
Right. So in other words, we know where this family is living right now, the second family. Okay, so why do we need a PI? I mean, what's that?
In the first case?
I'm actually just moving to the homeless family, the previously homeless family first. We don't need to hire a PI, in that case, because we have firm knowledge.
No, 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 we're not going to hire a private investigator.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, actually.
Because you had mentioned maybe doing it in some other cases.
We do have a situation, I should say. I'm not sure if I want to go the route of hiring a private investigator, but we do have a situation in which a student was enlisted as homeless, but now we believe has permanent residency in another town, quite a distance from here. We paid home visits.
To the other town?
But we have not been able to reach anybody, nobody has responded to our request for communication.
So you mean, I mean, again, I don't mean to micromanage, but you paid a home visit to her home in the other town, and knocked on the door, and nobody answered?
Absolutely. We have actually paid a home visit, nobody's responded to our.
How do we know she's there if we have other evidence of some sort?
I can, I'll bring DeeDee Deacher here and have her testify before you.
Well, no, I, I, oh, I don't mean I'm like, don't trust somebody, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to understand intellectually, sort of, we somehow know that she lives there, that when we knock on the door, nobody comes in, nobody comes out, we have some reason to think that they're there, however? Why do we think they're there?
I'm not understanding your question, I'm sorry.
So we think, like, say, this person lives in Westfield. How do we know that? Like, what's our evidence? And I don't mean details, but has DeeDee seen them there?
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Did she go to the apartment and see someone come out?
So when we believe we have a place of permanent residence, we do try to contact the family and whoever's living there. In this particular case in which I'm referring, the two parents are separated, I really don't feel that comfortable sharing.
No, no, I, no.
But I'll say that with that telling you, which parent is absent in the relationship?
Right, someone's absent.
The other parent has already made contact to indicate that that parent is living in a particular residence. But when we tried to confirm, we didn't get a response, personal response.
Wow, it seems like.
We are paying transportation for the student, by the way.
Right, sure. Oh, no, no, right. I mean, I have no doubt that we need to like, get this settled, right?
I'm not suggesting we hire a private investigator in that case.
Oh, okay, okay, that's all.
However, it's an example of some of these, some of the borderline cases, some of the borderline cases.
I just want to say, I understand what you're saying, Anne, and I appreciate you bringing that up also. I, I don't want to see a direct link between our re-registration process and then, you know, having private investigators going out to investigate everything that we can.
But that's the last time we have anybody re-register, right?
Right, exactly. Now, I appreciate what Rob said.
Of course.
And I agree with him. I want to know that we are following, that we have procedures and protocol, and that they are being followed every single time, and documented, and that this is a final step. You know, especially, and I think, you know, the cases that stand out to me are the ones like, where we're sending someone out of district for $80,000.
And it could be millions of dollars.
So I think it would be helpful, then, to assure the board, for good reason, that we are going through all the steps we have to, is if I come to the board in November with a recommendation to approve compensation for a private investigator to conduct a search, I also provide you, redacting names, of course, and any other confidential information, all the paperwork that we, that prefaced the use of a private investigator.
I would like to, I'd like to just comment that I wonder if the board has a policy on this, or whether we should update our policy on this, because if the policy.
Really?
Well, I'm sorry, but, no, no.
I adjust, of course.
Scott wouldn't have to, Scott wouldn't have to come in to make this case.
Right.
If the policy said, we'll do A and B, the district will do A, B, C, and D, and in those cases where all those steps didn't work, the superintendent is authorized to hire private investigators to ascertain where the family lives.
Right. What we don't want to have, have happen is somehow we would be accused of being selective in one way or another, of going after certain people as opposed to others. That would be inappropriate.
Well, and that is what we will be doing, because of course, we don't want to send a PI after everybody. Maybe we should send a PI after everybody. I mean, we're selecting a special needs student who is costing the district a great deal of money, we're not doing it with the other 50 families. So, I mean, how, I understand the motivation for doing that. Is that okay for us to do?
No, actually, we're not, we're not. We're actually going after people who did not follow, who did not respond to us.
Well, no, there's 50 families that haven't responded to us. This is the one we're thinking about hiring a PI for, because this one is costing us money, extra money.
Right.
So if you're worried about selectiveness, we are being selective.
Well, let's go after the other 47 then, and then we won't be, then we can't be accused of that, because that would, perhaps that would be the right way to go.
This family, this family, though.
Fine with that.
This family.
Because we might find some others.
We might, and we should be careful, too, if this family is any kind of a protected class, you know, if that could be perceived as selective in a way that's not helpful to us, you know.
I think this family rose to Scott's attention before the re-registration problems.
Yes.
So it isn't the case that they were costing us, and in fact, of the 50 families, I believe Scott had said that four of those families were parents of special needs students who are going out of district, who we haven't gone to that step yet, because, only because we're slightly behind in schedule. And, you know, slightly behind the schedule of having kind of ascertained that that family doesn't live in town, or believing they don't live in town, so that when we catch up to the 50, and maybe we have five families that, oh, and five families that should be investigated one way or another, because they just never get back to us. Some of them may or may not be special needs. And any family who's sending their children here, who don't belong here, they're liable for tuition.
Of course they are, of course.
The case in NJ.com, they were charged like.
They had to pay back.
Nine or 12 or 20,000 a year for the kids that were in school and should have been in another school district. So I think the money, while of course, the money counts, the money isn't the issue, it's the, it's kind of the, I hate to put it this way, because it doesn't sound right when you're hiring investigators, but it's kind of the moral high ground. Somebody is taking money from our district, from our kids, when they live somewhere else, and we kind of can't let that happen.
I ask.
We have a history of attracting out-of-town kids who do pay tuition in this town, and we've had that for a long, long time. It's one Z, two Z, it may not be, you know, 20 or 30, but we do have that. So to those people who are spending 10, 12, whatever, $1,000, how would we sound if we're saying, well, you pay it, but it's okay, we're not going to go after the others?
I mean, for my part, I would say that, of course, all those things are true. I have, and I don't think any of us dispute that if people are doing this intentionally, as they must be in some cases if they're doing it, if they're doing it, it's theft. If they're doing it, we need to stop it, because our taxpayers can't be paying for this. Our special needs students, you know, have needs and resources that they need. I think the only question in my mind is about the method of tracking people down. I have no issue with the principle that this is a moral violation, it's a legal violation, and it's our responsibility as a board to be fiscally responsible and make sure that our taxpayers aren't paying for somebody who lives in Edison. My only concern is with how we do it. I mean, I think you raise a good point, Rob Magaziner, if, do we want to be selective? I mean, right now, we're thinking about being selective, because we don't like the idea of sending a PI after 50 people. And I'm not sure that, I mean, Scott, is it your intention to go through this process with all 50 families, and when it gets to this point, then send a PI out? I mean, in other words, are we, are we just not there yet with the other 49 families?
Well, as I stated a few minutes ago, no.
Okay, that's.
In fact, it would be, wouldn't be cost-effective, it would be too costly. I don't know if we could incur that kind of cost, nor is it necessary.
If it's 80 bucks, then we could.
But Scott, but Scott, if you get to the 50 families, and you send each of the 50 families a certified letter.
Right.
And 25 come back with correct information, so we're down to 25, and you send another certified return receipt letter to those 25, and 12 of them come back, they finally get to it, and you're left with 13. And after 10 times, you can't get to those 13 families, I would certainly, as a board member, be in favor of investigating them, because otherwise, you can't kick them out.
I'll tell you what makes the few cases I referred to earlier distinct. We heard things about these families. We, we have additional information aside from the formal paperwork that leads us to believe these things. People talk in town. And frankly, I would, if I'm down to 15, 20 families who haven't re-registered, I'd try to look into it further in-house, talk to friends, talk to peers. Hey, so-and-so okay, and we want to make sure that they're, you know, they're, I don't know, I don't know how I would pose that delicately, but I would try to find out.
That is part of the protocol, and probably is a good reason why we should have formal policies.
Yes, I think you're right. Yeah, absolutely.
By the way, the policy we have on record, which is 5111 eligibility of resident, non-resident students, which was last, updated, revised March 2011, has a lot of language in it, but it refers to the code, NJAC 6A, when it's out, referring to the process in which we would engage. And so then I went to that code while we were chatting, and it's very lengthy. You can do the research on your own if you go to Strauss Esme. But so there's not clear language that states what we would do, refers to the code.
Right. And probably it's up to us to do the specifics. My guess is the code, well, the code is very specific about what to do when someone doesn't pay for lunch. The code goes into, you know, it really micromanages us how many days the kid gets, you know, geez. So, yeah, we'll figure out how specific the code is, and it sounds like it's not terribly specific. And I think you're right, we do need a policy, because we don't want to appear to be going after, I mean, I don't know, do we think it's enough to not be accused of selectiveness? That we have extra evidence about these families? I mean, we really need a policy.
But, well, the, right now, though, we've sent them two requests for information. We've had non-response on both of those. Right now, we have not given them written notices, as far as I understand, that we, that we, that they haven't established residency. We're just requesting residency information. So my understanding is that the, a PI would be the formulation for us to have something to start with, this go, you know, we are, we don't feel that you've established residency, and then that would start the clock as to whether or not they want to go, oh, no, here's my stuff, and prove that they are a resident, or show that they can't prove it, and then a resident, or show that they can't prove it, and then they, and then work towards moving their child out of district, correct?
What's the process from here?
Yeah. So, what's the process after the PI? Because I know we have to write them a written letter saying that we disagree...
So, what if two things could happen? What a private investigator would do is give me a report, give me pictures, and the summary based on the pictures would tell me whether or not the person is in fact a resident. If the person's, if the family is not a resident, we would serve them notice that they have to remove their child. They would have, I think, 21 days, according to our, we do have a policy on removing students who are residents. But the, but the family could very well decide they're going to now establish residency in Highland Park, in which case, we would be obligated to, to keep them here at Highland Park. Simple as that.
We could pursue them for the period of time when they weren't residents, but that, yeah, that would be a little bit difficult litigation-wise.
There's always that potential.
Yeah. That's pretty expensive.
Like I said, though, in the case that I dealt with in Kettleworth, it was the only residency case that went as far as the commissioner. The family just got tired of all the hassle, couldn't afford to make the move to the community, and so they uprooted and moved to a completely different state.
Meanwhile, the protocol that we're following now is that Scott, as the superintendent, is coming to the board and asking for our approval to go in this certain direction. And I think, I mean, that, if that's what you're asking, then I would be all for it, as long as we're, as long as we've gone through all of those steps. But we're, you're not asking for us to vote on that at this time.
Oh, no, 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 but I don't want to do something before I get a vibe or a pulse on the board's feelings. But, sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I, your, your concern with selectivity is a good one. And it, so, we're not voting tonight. I mean, will you be putting this on the agenda prior to hiring the PI, or?
No. I mean, this is, this is a time of the essence here.
So, you need to do this right away, and then retroactively?
Our attorney's recommending we do this as soon as possible.
Right. So, I mean, maybe we should make a decision about the direction we want to go with regard to the other families. Do we want to make this a policy that applies to everybody? After, like, you know, 17 letters have gone out, plus two phone calls, plus a home visit, or whatever, then we hire the PI? I mean, we don't have a policy in place, but do we want to demand that of Scott, that we make sure the same protocol is followed for all of these families, not just for the ones that we have special information about or that are particularly expensive?
It's interesting, because on the other hand, if we, if we really do know, regardless of, of letters, if we actually have information, know that a family does not live here, we know.
Then why are you waiting?
I mean, I don't know that you need to necessarily go through the 15-letter process.
No, I think you have to do that, because if you're going to say that they need to be taken out of the school...
It's kind of gossip at this point. I mean, I would imagine, I mean, I would imagine we don't have a photograph of them, like, you know, buying their new house, putting the key in the door, you know, in Edison, or wherever they are.
Or somebody else lives there.
Well, I mean, depending on what the information is, maybe somebody else lives there, maybe a relative lives there, and we're not really, I mean...
Not maybe. If somebody...
Yes, if somebody else lives there. But I, but I understand, yes, that would be an example of we know. Right.
Right. There could be an example of we know.
Yes.
I'd still like to see the protocol followed.
Yeah. I mean, still, is it their grandmother that lives there?
No, not.
I mean, it might be in some of these cases. Well, no, I'm saying that because...
I'm not saying the case, yes, I agree. There could be that case.
Yes. We might actually have that case before us.
There could be any case. I mean, you can imagine all sorts of things.
Right. Well, that's why, I mean, that's why I'm thinking that maybe we should go through the protocol anyway, because we might think we know...
But does Scott need a vote tonight?
He doesn't need a vote.
Which is very unusual for us to do.
He needs to react.
As opposed to a recommendation that he should follow the same protocol for everyone, and when that protocol gets us to the point where they're not responding, and we need to get the, we need to get real evidence, as opposed to they're not responding, that he takes the appropriate measures, which he's suggesting an investigator, and...
And he is the CEO.
What?
And he is the CEO of the district.
No, no, right. But the thing is, it's going to be on the agenda to vote on it in a couple of weeks, to vote on whether we paid that money for the investigator, and he wants to do that first. So, we need to decide if we're going to vote yes now, because if we're not going to vote yes now, it's going to be like a really awkward thing.
Correct. We're not going to have an emergency meeting of $80 investigator bill.
Right. And, you know, my guess is that it's not going to be $80. We need to sit out there for hours getting photos.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially if the person doesn't live there now, but they're going to take a picture of some grandma walking in the building.
No, no, they'll take a picture of where they do live.
Well, that's, right, that's not what Scott said, but that is, yes. If we know, if there is a case in which we know where they do live, then yes, that would be one way to do it.
By the way, this could be the...
As someone who works with investigators, though, this could be more than $80.
It's a lot of time and hypotheticals.
Right. Right. So, I just, I don't want us to get to the meeting and be like, "No, we're voting no on this." You know, "Scott already spent the money." You know, that would really stink. So, do we want to give a recommendation to Scott now that we go through a standard protocol for all of these people, when we don't get the response, when we do this, we do that, we do that, then it's time to ask the board for money for a PI? I mean, does that sound reasonable to people?
It does.
That we go through a regular protocol?
It does, yes.
Okay. So, we're not going to be singling out the family with the most expensive special ed child?
Absolutely.
Absolutely not.
Okay, okay.
Only any egregious case, only after which we've exhausted all the protocols, would I go that next route.
Okay.
And then I would present the information in closed session, because it would contain confidential information.
Right, right.
And then you would see a recommendation on the board agenda to compensate so-and-so for services.
And the reason we're talking about it now is because that recommendation might come after you've already done it, because...
Correct.
Time is of the essence. Correct. Okay. So, I mean, we have a consensus that we should recommend informally for now, without a vote, that we would like Scott to go through the same process for all the families, and, you know, sort of do the same things regardless of how expensive that child's education is. And we'll come up with a formal policy later. But, okay, all right. So, we're not going to just pick and choose among the students who are costing us the most money. All right. I hate the idea of a PI. Is there anything else we can do informally to, like, reach out to these people? Is there anything?
I could get out there if you'd like. I'm not a private investigator, but I get up early, I run. I could run, and, you know, my runs.
I mean, I could go out there, you know, and it's just like...
Just happen to be taking a selfie.
I know, exactly.
It's not really a joking matter, but I guess what I'm trying to make light of a very serious situation.
No, it's awful. It's awful. It's awful for us, and it's, you know, it's awful for this kid, too, frankly, to have parents doing this, and put them in this terrible position, you know, where they're going to be ripped from their school, probably. So, is there, but is there any, we don't have any, like, you know, internal connections with this family? We don't have anything to child study?
We do, which is what led us to this problem, actually.
And this problem...
And I can't discuss anything further.
No, I don't want to.
There's no between way to do it, you know? You need some hard evidence when...
Well, sometimes they'll admit it, if they come, you know, if you talk to the person and be like, "Hey, you know, I'm the caseworker on your case. I see you're going to that house right there. It's not in Highland Park. You know, you're going to have to remove your child. I'm going to report this to the superintendent."
No, the child really doesn't live here. The child lives somewhere else.
I know, but sometimes they'll, sometimes it can be resolved without the need for, I'm wondering if there's a way to resolve it without the need for private investigators.
Yeah, the letters that were sent.
Somebody who's brazen enough to do this is likely not to be moved by a personal appeal.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else you can do, I mean, my request would be that if there's anybody else who can reach out to them, in the hope of arriving at some kind of non-adversarial.
Ken?
But I, you've probably done all that.
Just, just before we move forward on anything like this, can you have the board attorney look one more time at 5111, and whether or not we can send them a letter based on the way it's worded, without having to employ a private investigator? You know, I know their recommendation right now is to use a private investigator, so we have enough there. But if there's any way that we could go, "You know what? Based on everything that we have and your failure to comply with our two previous requests..."
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's great.
"We're sending you, we feel that you're ineligible, and you know, now you're on the 21-day clock per NJAC 6A 22 to respond to the board."
That's a great idea. I love that idea. That's fantastic.
And then what if they don't?
And if they don't, then we hire the PI. Then we go to the PI.
I'm sorry, Judy.
And then if they don't respond to that, then whether you do say you're no longer welcome here, or you get the PI.
Oh, yeah.
I think that actually...
Well, I think, I think if they, if our board attorney's able to do it based on our current policy, that would start the 20-day clock, and then those parents would have to appeal to, I think, us first by law and/or to someone in Trenton.
I think we're premature in starting a clock, and I think you actually would possibly limit your future options by starting a clock before you want to.
And farm your case.
I think we're just fact-finding.
Because looking at it, like, because this might be another question for the board attorney, like, if we do start the clock, I don't know that it necessarily puts a monetary onus on the district or to the parent to show residency, because if they're able to show residency, then we just go, "Okay, our bad." And we go, you know, we just continue forward, and allow that student to continue with their out-of-district placement paid for under our dime. But if they're unable to, then, then we, then the, they would have to move forward on finding a different placement for that student.
I, I, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. I mean, I don't know what the attorney would say, but you, you put the family on notice, and they quickly do whatever magic tricks they're going to do to get the kid to the place that they say that the kid was supposed to live, which is their aunt, the aunt's house, or the grandmother's house, or whatever, for a week or two or three. And they would send us pictures showing that the kid really lives there, because they've been notified without us having in our hands the pictures of the kid not living there, the kid coming from Metatchin or Edison, which the PI didn't get a chance to make. So, I think we ruin our own case, and we look pretty foolish. And that's, I think, why the, the attorney made that suggestion. And I mean, this was common practice, and it was common practice 30 years ago.
Common practice, yeah, but...
Well, that may not be a great practice, but, but don't put, no, don't put the onus on us, Ann. It's not on us. It's on them for doing this, for, you know, I'm going to say it again, for, I hate to...
No, I understand. I understand. If they're doing this, they're stealing our money. The onus on us is to figure out how to deal with that, how to get them, or how to confirm or deny. It's not, it's not about whether they, like, we think it's a good idea for them to be stealing our money, you know, just to be clear. I don't want them to steal our money.
But when the, but when the investigator goes and says they really are living with, you know, with Aunt Harry at, in, on whatever, you know, on North Sixth, then we say, "Okay", and they don't even have to know it.
Right.
But it's, it's not just...
But we're not tipping them off. You know, we're not dealing, we're not dealing with good intentions here. So, why tip someone off who doesn't have good intentions?
Right. But it's not just where the student lives, because, like, even if the student lives with their aunts in Highland Park, you know, that aunt is the person who provides all of the monetary income to, for that student. Like, they're supposed to not be getting any support or any other sort of input from the, from the actual parents, you know, for that, for that person, you know, when they, when they supposedly domicile there. Because if the parents are still providing support, et cetera, and they live out of district, then it still falls under that stu, that where those parents live, who are providing the support services for the, for the child.
I think, I think we're making it a little too complicated. Honestly, I think, I think we, we've, we're asking a simple question. "Please return this letter. Please return this envelope. We're asking a few questions. Please return it." That's, we don't have to get into...
And we've asked multiple times.
No, we've asked multiple times. We don't have to worry about all, all of the other stuff.
True.
We then, we need to verify the information at some point. Now, if we haven't gone far enough with our standard tools, I don't think we need to create another sort of tool that, as Mark says, and I do think it would, it would hurt our case later on, if, if there were a case.
I guess I'm tending to agree, yeah. I just hate it. I hate having a PI go out to someone's house, or someone's non-house. Probably because of the message that sends to our other students, you know?
Well, you've given me my marching orders, so I know how to proceed.
Okay. And we'll work on coming up with a policy that ensures that we, we do the same thing in every case. And that's what we'll anticipate doing here with those other, other 49 families, God forbid. Hopefully, some of them will get back to us.
Don't worry, we're not going to have, you know, unmarked vans all over Highland Park with Kat with long zoom lenses. Again, we're talking about the most egregious cases, maybe one, two.
And I think we can trust that the administration will do all that it can, informally to reach out to people. For example, the administration knows that this person is living in Westfield. Maybe someone will go out to Westfield and be like, "Hey, do we have to hire a PI for you?" Or maybe not. Maybe that would hurt our case. But if there is some reasonable way to deal with it. Okay. All right. Are we done with this discussion?
Yes.
Wow. Sorry, Scott. We really, like, worried that into it, like, a little. You know, you put something where Darcy always says, "Our student reps are welcome to leave." Of course you are, but you're also welcome to stay. I don't want you to feel unwelcome, because no one's welcomed you, whatever you would like. Okay, so, let's see. We have board goals to do. It's 9:30 almost. Kind of like a straw poll, who feels like dealing with board goals? Anybody feel like, I don't really feel like, I mean, I can tell you, I prepared a document that I shared with everybody, a couple of documents, right? One is Scott's, it's a PDF of all the focus areas, showing Scott's status report with the red, yellow, blue, green, purple, whatever the colors are, right? And the other one is sort of what I copied off of Scott's document. I put some notes on it. I had a couple of questions about some of the goals. Some of the goals, it seemed like we're putting them down again, but we already sort of accomplished some of them, so we want to make them more specific. What I didn't do was sort of go through the strategic plan, and look and see if there were things that were not on that list that I feel strongly about. Do people want to sort of do that over the next, before the next meeting, sort of like really take a hard look at the strategic plan, and their own preferences, and determine if there are other goals that they really want to propose for our goals list? And also take a look at the suggested goals in that document? Those are Scott's suggestions with my markups.
Yeah, I, I plead guilty, having, now looking at your comments for the first time.
Well, you had an hour. It was an hour before, it was an hour before the meeting.
I know, I had an hour.
You did, and you should have stopped everything else. I was a little behind.
The dog needed walking.
The last, the last couple of weeks of holidays have really put me behind.
I didn't expect anybody to look at it an hour before the meeting. I mean, that's when I finally got to it, right, so...
But can I say, this is a great, this is a great start. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I think it will be helpful to us to take a look at, at what you've done, and it'll give us probably some ideas to, you know, make some additional comments, I would hope.
Okay. I mean, the document itself, the text of the, not the PDF, the Google Doc, those are the proposed goals that Scott put down. And they're, for the most part, they're goals that were, I think that you had already designated for 2017, 18, or they're goals from this year that we hadn't finished.
Correct. And I did, as we did last year, I just pulled out the ones we're emphasizing. A lot had to do with the first focus area on equity. And then I modified some of the language to make it more relevant to the board's work, not so much the leadership team.
Right, right. So, I think they looked pretty good, a few questions, but I haven't had a chance to sort of go through the plan, and, you know...
And I don't think, I really don't think that any time after 9:30 is a time to hash, or after 10 o'clock is a time to hash out the, the fine points, or the, even the large points of a board goals proposal. What I, what I, you know, what I'm thinking is that we should go over, as you just said, go over the goals before the next meeting, and maybe pass a document among ourselves around, so that we come up with something that we're pretty happy voting on, or very close to happy voting on.
I like that idea, except for the quorum issue.
We just have to be careful if we don't have quorum.
So, if people wanted to, like, take the document, you know, copy it on their own piece of paper, go through, make notes, and then maybe send it to me, or send it to Darcy, send it to somebody, you know, well in advance of the next meeting, then one of us, if you send it to me, I'll get it to Darcy. And then, then I can start putting the comments into a single document.
We can pass it around. We're not voting on it. Can't we pass a document around between us?
It's like having a discussion.
We can't have a live, oh, a live discussion on Google Doc or something?
No, no, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting a live discussion. I was suggesting a document that gets passed around, that people look at, like we look at in the policies.
So, we can't do that via a Google Doc, where people, like, make corrections to that, or suggestions on that document?
We cannot.
No, because that would be like an email, an email chain involving all of us. I mean, actually, Mark, I think we can, but the position our board attorneys have taken is we must be very careful to avoid even the slightest appearance of violating. I mean, I think within the language of OMA, we could certainly do it. But I, I am content to follow our attorney's recommendation, so...
So, the best way is then individually, we look at the, at the list, we create new comments, and send them to Ann and Darcy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then we can flush them out when we get together.
I'll compile them into a single document.
I would be happy to send them to you to share with Darcy, or to both of you.
Yeah, send them to me, so we don't have a whole bunch of piecemeal things. Okay? Ruslovich, you got that? You're way down there.
And then you guys can go over something as a final point, you know?
Yeah, right. And then we'll assemble them into a final document that shows all the, all the comments.
Every week it's going to be 10 o'clock.
It's 10 o'clock, it's the time of the board goals, okay.
Well, we were originally going to get together and do a retreat to do the board goals during the summer, and we just never did that.
I know.
We can't do it. Can we do it? We can't do it if it's a march.
We were going to do a public...
A public, yeah.
It could be public. It's going to be in, like, Westchester or whatever, but the public is welcome to attend.
You could have three, three separate tables at Pinos.
Don't we do that all the time, anyway? Just joking. Okay, so Ruslovich, is that okay with you? You're so far away down there.
What things have changed.
Ruslovich? Ruslovich?
Yes.
Is this a good plan for you? You feel, you're so far away. I feel like I'm not necessarily including you in the conversation.
I made, I made notes last week. I'm more than comfortable trying to, like, throw
I'm more than comfortable trying to, like, throw those at one or two other people just to feel them out and see where they are at with that, and then come back to the table again later on, just
Let's go back to the virtual table if you, if you have a chance. Scott, when is our next meeting? I've forgotten.
The 13th, November 13th.
Okay, so, I mean, in the next week, if you could go back to the, oh, wait, it's only the, okay. In the next two weeks, if you could go back to the virtual table, you know, take some notes on your own and then submit a document to me, an email, call me, text me, send me something, you know, a pictorial
Get it at the Dog Park.
Yeah, at the Dog Park, we'll talk about it. Yeah, all right. And board reps, we'd love to have your input. So, you know, you have my email address, presumably. You have all of our email addresses. So please, if, you know, if there are things that you think we should be addressing as sort of central goals, then we need to hear about it.
And I'm sorry, you'd like just, are the board, the goals available for public viewing or just, I mean, just, and not even just for me, just as for the community as a whole?
Yeah, well, at the end of every agenda
Oh, I see.
It's printed up, yeah, a confusing list of
Got it, okay.
Sort of our general goals and our more specific
I don't always read the fine print at the end, so.
When I send stuff to the board, though, to the board, Board at HP Schools, it doesn't go to you guys, right? Let me make sure I have your email addresses so I can share the goals document with you guys. Go ahead. Do you want to send them in public or do you want to not send them in public?
I don't care. You just use our school addresses for all this kind of stuff.
Okay, school, okay, okay. So I will email you guys the link to the board documents goal that we're working with.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, all right, very exciting. I mean, the goals are important because we really do have these goals that we want to express, but they also get very nitpicky, and, "Are we going to do action step A 1.7 J 2 9?" You know, so it can be a little annoying. Okay, although I do appreciate how Scott has organized it for us. All right, oh, sorry, so, excuse me. So is there any new business besides whatever that we just discussed could be considered new? No new business? Okay, it's time for public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Would anybody like to come to the podium and chat with us? All right, then. Then I think it's time for me to ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Good night, everybody. See you on the 13th.